We will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Tom Hanson and invocation by Pastor Larry Jameson. Please stand.
Please join me in renewing your pledge to our country's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for this night that we can be together here in these chambers. You've blessed this city and you've honored it by giving us people to sit before us to help make decisions for the betterment of our community. We are so blessed to be in this wonderful city and to see how it has grown better and better each and every year. And for the last 31 years of being here in this city, we have seen such great improvements. But there's still more to do, and that's why we come here today, to ask you for your leadership, your guidance, to help us understand the real necessities, what decisions to make, what to spend finances on, and how to make those improvements for the betterment of all the residents here. So we give you praise and thanks today for the insight in which you will give to us and make clear to us what to do for the future. We give you praise and thanks for your goodness, your faithfulness, and your graciousness to us all. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
May I have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Gillan.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Lemons.
Here.
Excuse me.
Okay, that's okay.
Take it back.
It's all right. Okay. City Council, public comment updates?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The last council meeting, although we had five public comment cards, only three of these required a follow-up by staff. The first one was from Ms. Sandra Decay, who commented that there was misinformation about the cost of a possible recall election that staff had brought up during the budget. The staff follow-up to this comment is that the cost of a possible recall election is as follows: $55,200 for consolidated election with LA County, of which $42,000 of that is the cost we will be charged by the county. Now, for a standalone election, it's $293,000, of which $280,000 is the cost we will be charged by the county. Now, it should be noted that both figures include not only the cost that the county will charge us, but also includes incidental costs our city clerk and curs that are associated with running any type of an election. So... The second speaker that evening was Mr. Robert E. Barra, and he spoke about the closing of the Job Center on Colorado, and we addressed Mr. E. Barra's concern at the last council meeting. The third speaker that required follow-up from staff was from Mr. Richard Alanice, and Mr. Alanice had the same concern that Ms. Decay had. So since I've already covered this, there's nothing further to add with that, and that concludes this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Are there any public comment cards?
Yes, ma'am. We have two. One of them is from Mr. Timothy McGinnity, and he wants to speak on item number six. So, Mr. McGinnity, we'll call you up when that item is to be heard. Our second speaker's card is from Ms. Andrea Crowe, the librarian of Paramount Library. She'd like to discuss some events coming up. Andrea?
Per the rules of decorum, I will not be accepting any more public cards.
Okay, Andrea.
Mayor Martinez, councilmembers in the city of Paramount, I'd like to invite you to some amazing events at Paramount Library. This Saturday, July 7th, at 2:00 p.m., we have Bubble Mania for children ages 3 to 12 and their families. A bubbleologist will entertain and educate with the excitement of bubbles. On Wednesday, July 11th, we start our four-week workshop on e-textiles. LA Makerspace will be at Paramount Library to teach children and teens ages 7 to 15 all about wearable technology. And adults, we didn't forget about you. You're invited to create your own gorgeous luggage tag on Friday, July 13th, at 3:00 p.m. Please check out our website, lacountylibrary.org, for more fun events at Paramount Library. Thank you.
Andrea, I really enjoyed attending last Saturday the puppet show for the children of our community. He was excellent. He had the children laughing and laughing, even the parents. So it was a wonderful show, so I will attend this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comment cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Consent calendar, approval, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion approved. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemons.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Item five, may I have a staff report, plan to prevent and combat homelessness?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The first draft of our plan to combat and prevent homelessness is complete now. If you recall, we applied for and received a grant from LA County to develop this plan, and the grant is funded through Measure H funds. The plan is a joint venture between us and the city of Bellflower, and it outlines our priorities in addressing issues related to the chronic homelessness issue that's facing our whole county. As you'll see, the plan is a collection of ideas for how we can help address the regional issue of homelessness, and including the development of the plan, we're meeting with stakeholders and with the community at large. The plan was developed by our consultant PATH. So with us tonight is Ms. Bridget Kelly and Ms. Elizabeth Hager from PATH, who will walk us through the plan and answer any questions you may have about the plan or homelessness in general, and questions you have about that. So, the plan is, once we integrate any feedback from the council tonight into the draft plan, we will come back for your approval with a final plan at the July 17th council meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to our two representatives from PATH, Ms. Bridget Kelly and Elizabeth Hager.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Elizabeth Hager. I am the Deputy Chief Program Officer at PATH.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Kelly, and I am the Public Policy Manager at PATH. May we have a wonderful...
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for having us with you this evening. We are absolutely thrilled to present the plan that you have before you to you today. Briefly, what our presentation will cover is generally homelessness in Paramount. Background on the plan to prevent and combat homelessness, the plan development process, so exactly what we did to come up with the goals and the action items you see before you, some identified goals that we've pulled out. So we have a total of six goals that we've identified for the city, and then associated 18 action items accompanying those goals. And then, of course, we'll take questions at the end.
So homelessness in Paramount, what we'd like to do is just give a brief overview of the homeless count that happened in 2017. We understand that the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority did complete the 2018 numbers. Why we didn't bring that in here was because we don't have city-level data yet, so we wanted to make sure that we provided all the information on a city-level data, and so we utilized the 2017 numbers. What we did see from 2016 to 2017 was a slight increase. In 2016, we had 50 homeless individuals, and then up in 2017, we actually saw an increase to 111. So we are seeing throughout LA County a slight increase. We're hoping that through the 2018 numbers that we are finding a decrease in the homeless numbers, but we want to make sure that we can recognize those and then also start implementing those resources that we have in the community so that we can address the homelessness.
And as previously stated, truly statewide, we are in a crisis when it comes to the number of people experiencing homelessness on any given night. In response, LA County created 47 strategies to combat homelessness in February 2016. These 47 strategies were really created in an attempt to ensure that the county was funding best practices and proven approaches to combat homelessness, in addition to allowing cities to have a seat at the table when it comes to opportunities to combat homelessness. In March 2017, LA County voters also reacted to the crisis of the number of people experiencing homelessness in the county and passed Measure H. Measure H is, again, a quarter-cent sales tax that will fund about $350 million annually for homeless services throughout the county. As part of Measure H, they allowed for cities to apply for grants to create plans to prevent and combat homelessness, and Paramount, in response, and very wisely, applied for the grant jointly with Bellflower. They were awarded the grant and hired PATH to come on to conduct the plan development process and to write the plan itself. The plan development process was extremely robust, and I'd like to highlight three major components of the plan development process. The first includes stakeholder meetings, the second is a deep analysis of existing city policy, and the third involved research on best practices and existing resources that the city could tap into. I'd like to highlight, first, the stakeholder meeting component. We held three formal meetings with first service providers that served both the cities of Bellflower and Paramount, second, Paramount city staff, and third, the general community. A community input session was hosted, and it allowed time for public comment as well. Each of these meetings were formatted in such a way that allowed for, again, really robust discussion about homelessness specifically in the city of Paramount. Paramount service providers got to talk about challenges with service delivery within the city. Paramount city staff had the opportunity to explore ways that homelessness intersects with their day-to-day jobs and explore the way challenges are preventing them from being able to be efficiently addressing homelessness to the best of their ability. Part of that discussion also was city staff coming up with possible solutions that the city could implement, and you'll see those included in the plan. And lastly, the community input session. And I have to say, Paramount is extremely impressive with how invested your city staff and your constituents are in trying to bring an end to homelessness for your community. We had great attendance at that meeting and a great discussion. We broke into small groups, talked about challenges to ending homelessness in the city, and ultimately ended with a really awesome solutions-based discussion on how the city, or, excuse me, how community members thought that they could help address homelessness in the city as well. As I mentioned, we also did a deep dive into existing city policies. So those city policies included everything from the general plan and the housing element, to the consolidated plans, the annual action plans, and the comprehensive annual report that goes to HUD and applications for home and CDBG funds. So, again, we looked at those existing policies and did our best to align them with the policies we introduced within our plan.
So, in partnership with the Paramount Public Safety, as Bridget mentioned, wait one more, we were able to identify six major goals with action items attached to each of those goals. And so what I'd like to do is just take a brief moment to go through those six goals, and then we've actually identified three main ones that will go into more depth after. But, again, if you have any questions about any of them, please don't hesitate to ask. So the first one is just, the first goal is educating residents about homelessness and increasing awareness. The goal around this is to make, the idea behind this is to make sure that we can have residents really be aware of what's going on in their own community and what they can do as stakeholders to support the homeless efforts that are, and the city's current efforts that are actually going on. One of the action items is to have people participate and invite them to do booths in the community, have nonprofits come into the community so that we can educate residents about what's going on and what they can do, tangible things that they can actually do. We also want to be able to utilize social media to let the residents know about what's going on in the community, what current efforts are being done. And then, of course, voicing the city's support for the Everyone in campaign, which is something that United Way began. The second goal is increasing access to homeless services in the city of Paramount. So we want to make sure that we not only support the current providers that are in the Paramount area, but what other additional resources and what other service providers can we bring into the Paramount area to help those residents, to make sure that we can get those homeless individuals and homeless families off of the streets. We also want to make sure that we can support outreach workers using city space so that they can have those residents come in, educate them, talk to them about what's going on. And if we have that public space available to them, then they have a central meeting point that they can utilize. And then we also want to make sure that we can explore creative solutions for case management services. We want to look at what are the encampments that are around? Are there daily, are there storage options for those that have encampments so that we can help move those individuals and those families off of the streets? The next goal is mobilizing the community to proactively address homelessness. So what we really want to do is we want to make sure that we can have the Paramount Homeless Coalition, the providers, the law enforcement, the faith community, have everybody come together and talk about what's working, what's not working, so that everybody can have a voice in ending homelessness. We want to make sure that we can coordinate all of these efforts because everybody has an expertise, and so we want to make sure that we can build on the expertise of those different groups. The fourth goal is to ensure efficient use of city resources when responding to requests related to homelessness. So the idea is, behind this, is that this was a direct input from the city staff at many of our stakeholder meetings. We wanted to make sure that staff were very knowledgeable about the homelessness issue, and then they wanted to make sure that they had additional training. If there were some things that they weren't aware of about the resources or maybe how to approach the homeless individuals, what could they do? We want to make sure that we can provide those resources and those trainings to the city staff. We can have regular staff trainings with our local providers, making sure that we can increase the sense of being comfortable in dealing with the homeless issue. We also, the next goal is Goal Five, preventing Paramount residents from becoming homeless. We'll go into more detail about this, but this really focuses on prevention. What can we do as a city to make sure that we can prevent those that maybe are at risk of being homeless? What can we do as a city, and what resources can we provide to ensure that that doesn't happen, and they don't become homeless? We want to educate residents on what resources are available to them. We also want to increase funding. I mean, with the passage of Measure H, Bridget mentioned Measure H, with the passage of Measure H, we have prevention funding being funneled into the county. So we want to make sure that those funds are available to the city as well, to prevent those from becoming homeless. And then the sixth goal that we identified was increasing stock of supportive and affordable housing available in the city. We want to make sure that we can track those units that are available. What units, you know, do we need to talk to housing developers? Do we need to find out where can we build housing so that we can have those available resources for our homeless participants? We want to be able to conduct land use assessments to identify those underutilized lots or buildings that might be usable for housing options for the homeless population.
So as Elizabeth outlined, this plan is in-depth. It provides six goals with 18 associated action items that the city could take on in order to effectively roll out and implement those goals. So we have chosen to highlight three goals and one associated action item with each of those goals in the following slides. The idea behind this is it'll allow us to highlight some of the components we used in identifying all of the goals and action items, and it'll also provide you all with a guide to really digest the rest of the plan as you read through it as well. So each of the 18 action items that are associated with each of the six goals are accompanied by eight categories. Those categories include policy changes, so what the city may need to undertake in order to effectively be able to implement that action item. Measurement, so what does success mean for this action item? Third is timeline, so what is the timeline for starting the implementation of this action item? Ownership, a recommendation around what city department could take ownership over accomplishing this action item. Leverage city resources, this includes things like staff time, space at city facilities, and things like that. Funding opportunities, it outlines a numerous, numerous and a variety of funding sources that are available at multiple levels of government, that are available to the city to apply for, for individuals living within the city, and for nonprofit providers to apply for. We're looking at ways to really leverage what's already out there and make sure that it gets and makes its way to Paramount. County strategy alignment, so this is what I spoke about earlier. The county identified those 47 strategies, and Measure H is currently funding 21 of those 47 strategies. So the idea behind aligning each of those action items with the county strategies is that if it's not funded already, it may be funded in the future, and it'll provide additional resources for you all to tap into as a city. And finally, city policy alignment. So, again, that deep dive into the annual action plan, the general plan, the housing element, that all dictate the goals of the city currently, how those policies align with the identified action items are also provided within the plan as well.
So the first goal that we'd like to go into more depth about is the first goal, which is educating residents about homelessness and increasing awareness. When we were putting this presentation together and really figuring out what we wanted to focus on, we wanted to make sure that we could present something, all the goals being important, but really being able to have something tangible so that people could understand and recognize all of the current efforts that are being done and how we can move this forward. So the first one is, when we educate residents, I mentioned earlier, is having people come together in community events, having booths and tables, so that people can really understand what's going on in the city of Paramount, what's being done right now that I can participate in, that I can be a part of. Because we've had such great dedication during this process that we want to make sure that we can continue to build on that momentum and continue to educate the residents about those resources. We also want to be able to understand what resources are available to people experiencing homelessness, you know, the prevention money and the additional rapid rehousing Measure H dollars that are coming into the community. We want to make sure that people know about that so that they can have a voice in it and they can have a hand in ending homelessness. And then we also want to make sure that interested residents know about all this. You know, they had a lot of input into this community plan, so we want to make sure that they can continue to be interested and continue to support the efforts so that we can end homelessness.
The next goal and action item that we are hoping to outline for you is Goal Three, mobilize the community to proactively address homelessness. And the action item that's associated with being able to accomplish this goal is creating a Paramount Homeless Coalition. And this is a direct result from how great the community discussion was at that community input session that we held during the plan development process. We've seen in other communities that coalitions provide a fantastic platform for different entities, different experts, to come together around the same table and have a great discussion about ways to effectively address homelessness in the city. So this allows a platform for different sections within your city to, again, come together. Everyone from residents, to current service providers, to law enforcement, to your faith communities, your businesses, can all come along and have a voice at the table during these homeless coalition meetings. All we ask, as an action item of this, is time every once in a while at city council meetings for this coalition to be able to report out to all of you their findings, what they're finding, where the gaps are, opportunities for improvement, and honestly, just to update all of you on what's going on, you know, on the ground level with businesses, with the faith communities, as they're attempting to address homelessness in their community and in your community. And lastly, the goal that we'd like to outline is Goal Five, and this has to do with prevention, and specifically, a simple action item around educating residents about what is out there for them if they are at risk of homelessness. And this is a result of, first of all, city staff and community residents discussing this concept of, we need to break the cycle of homelessness. Oftentimes, our public safety, your public safety department is seeing the same people on the street, and it's getting to the point where they, we need to break the cycle. And that cycle can be broken and prevented from continuing with increased attention and awareness around the existing prevention programs that are already in operation throughout the county. The idea behind this also is to address some of the concerns outlined in your 2017 to 2021 consolidated plan, in which the city has identified some concerns around the number of people who are at risk of homelessness, specifically due to overcrowding within the city. And that is something, again, that's outlined in your consolidated plan as an opportunity for growth in the city, and we thought that this goal was directly in line with that. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for inviting us here and for listening to this presentation. We had a fantastic opportunity to be able to work with your city and to learn from your stakeholders, city staff, community residents, experts in the field. As operations and efforts to address homelessness continue in your city, it is really quite impressive to see the investment, and it's been, again, a really great opportunity to work with all of you, and we're excited to hear your feedback and to make any adjustments you see fit to ensure that this plan will effectively allow Paramount to address homelessness. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bridget. Thank you, Elizabeth. Are there any questions for the ladies? Okay, Councilmember Gillan.
I attended the Paramount Park homeless meeting that you had. I've been receiving phone calls from concerned residents about homelessness, and one of the issues has been trying to explain that homelessness is not a crime. And so, in fact, somebody called and said, what can we do? There's a homeless loitering around the library. So I tried to explain that homelessness is not a crime, but I think there needs to be an education component, that homelessness is not a crime, and loitering around a place is not a crime, but then also to business owners that homeless persons can build residency if they're not cleared out within a certain amount of time, and then you have to go through a court process to get them off your property. And I think that component of the, you know, the education portion needs to be addressed.
And you bring up a fantastic point, and something that came up frequently in our discussions, because we had the opportunity to work with your public safety department, specifically on the creation of this plan. So we had a lot of insight and a lot of guidance from the team over there, who are doing great work tirelessly to address homelessness in the city and to respond to constituent concerns like that. And that idea around the fact that experiencing homelessness is not a crime is true. You can't arrest someone for experiencing homelessness when there's nowhere else for them to go. And that's really the idea around booths at these, at city events, and at city rec centers, and at community gathering places, because it will allow for providers in the community to help support your city staff. So it's not always your city staff needing to respond with, sorry, our hands are kind of tied, that the city residents can become more aware of what can and cannot be done, and come up with different ways to address it. For example, calling a hotline to indicate the location of that individual, with an outreach team then responding between 24 and 72 hours later to engage that individual. So all of that is a great idea and would be great to implement in those provider booths at the city events and city spaces.
And then one other comment. Also, there's a lot of people who want to do a good deed, and they want to approach the homeless people and give them shoes and clothes, but a lot of the homeless that I've seen have mental illness, and so they need to be educated that you can approach somebody to do a good deed, like to give shoes or clothes. You have to know what you're doing, because if they're startled, they can attack. And I've seen that happen before in other places, and I'd hate for that to happen to anyone here in Paramount trying to do a good deed. But in Downey, a teacher told me that she took a homeless person home to let them shower to be a good Christian educator, and she was attacked in her home. And I think that we need to educate our community that even though you want to do a really good deed, there's a way to do it in a safe manner. So I think that needs to be part of the component as well.
And on that note, I'd love to point your attention to Appendix C. We did create a guide for citizen engagement and engaging people experiencing homelessness, and it does cite in there that it's only in the circumstances in which you feel the safest that you would even consider maybe approaching someone who you don't know very well. But we provide guides around the hot light number that you can have access to as a city of Paramount resident to call and, again, indicate the location of that individual if you are concerned about them and would like them to access services. So that is in Appendix C.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, do you happen to have the guide in an electronic version?
Yes, it's available in PDF, and I believe we can...
Did we already get supplied with it so we can put maybe it on our website?
Sure, we have the whole plan, so we can just pull that guide out of the PDF, extract it, and put it up on our website.
Maybe the number that you were talking about, you know, the 800 number to notify that there's somebody there, along with the guide, and we put that in a box on our website, you know, for easy access would be helpful.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, thank you very much again for the presentation, and she did give us a lot of kudos as staff, but also kudos goes to PATH for helping us with this, because this is something that we're all learning as staff. I mean, a perfect example of, I informed you about in my weekly memo, was the difficulty we're having with a gentleman, a homeless gentleman on Alondra Boulevard across from Alondra Hot Wings. We're learning and how to deal with this, and it's difficult. I mean, this was a perfect example of a community member that wanted assistance, that wanted help, that we approached, and he had a medical condition where this particular shelter would not allow him to go in, and so we had to try and find him some help, some... help, that we approached, and he had a medical condition where this particular shelter would not allow him to go in, and so we had to try and find him some help, some medical attention through our, our partners out there in the nonprofit world. So, but because of that, it was something that was broken down. So, we are now spearheading a conference call in two weeks, thankfully by Supervisor's Hans office, to see what, what, you know, what went on, how can we fix this so it doesn't happen again to another city, another agency that has somebody in their community that wants help? How can we repair this? Because it definitely was something that's, that's broken. So the, the poor gentleman had us stay on the street for another two weeks until we can actually find him a place.
What we're learning as we're moving forward to help the homelessness, and I was at attendance as well, Elizabeth, and you were a wonderful facilitator. We had so many residents in attendance that evening. But like you stated, in Goal Number Three, it's going to be very, very important that we continue to have monthly meetings and to have our faith communities, our, our schools, our businesses, our residents, come and voice their concerns, their challenges. So that's important, that we continue to have a monthly meeting. And I also like how you stated to have those come before the council to share and educate us as well. So thank you so much. Okay, so we'll go ahead and receive and file. Okay, Item Number Six, Public Hearing Ordinance Number 1104. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this next item is a bit complicated. It involves a lot of detail. It's in regard to housing. Both state and federal law requires cities to adopt ordinances that change local zoning codes to allow for certain types of uses in residential areas. One of these uses actually is in relation to the presentation on homelessness that you just heard. I, I need to remind you, if we don't adopt such ordinances, that not only are we in violation of law, but we are also at risk of losing both state and federal grant dollars. So, as you'll soon hear, there has been a lot of input opportunities from the community about this. And before I turn it over to our Assistant City Manager Kevin Chun for the presentation, I'd like to remind you, Madam Mayor, that we do have a speaker's card on this item. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin to handle the item. Kevin?
All right, thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you tonight is a zoning ordinance text amendment, also known as a ZODA, to add new language to the municipal code regarding various types of housing required of all cities in the state. The ZODA would establish, excuse me, the ZODA would establish transitional and supportive housing permitted by right in all residential zones, licensed residential care facilities, which would also be permitted by right in all residential zones serving six or fewer people, and an emergency shelter overlay zone at the Paramount Business Center at 6301 through 6439 Alondra Boulevard. The purpose of the ZODA is to bring Paramount into compliance with state and federal laws, which also allow the city to be eligible for various grant opportunities, as John mentioned. If the ZODA is not approved, the city would no longer be entitled to receive federal Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and home funding, which the city uses for its commercial and residential rehabilitation programs, and to help fund our crucial code enforcement operation in the Public Safety Department. The ZODA will allow for final certification of our housing element with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, as well as meet the requirements of the assessment of fair housing through the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The ZODA language will also be added to the city's plan to combat homelessness, which we just heard a little while ago, and which the council authorized earlier this year. And finally, last month, the Planning Commission reviewed the ZODA and unanimously approved staff's recommendation. Back in 2007, then-Governor Schwarzenegger signed housing legislation requiring all cities to identify zones for emergency shelters without conditional use permits, remove housing regulations for transitional and supportive housing, and to implement these policy changes through the housing element process. On the federal side, HUD requires cities to make an assessment of fair housing by documenting fair housing issues and access to decent and affordable housing. The city began this process in 2016 and must implement these HUD requirements through its zoning ordinance. As you know, one of the key elements of the city's general plan is the housing element. This is the city's long-range plan for housing in Paramount. To comply with state law, the city's housing element contains provisions for an emergency shelter overlay zone, traditional, transitional housing, and supportive housing. The housing element was updated in 2014, and this ZODA will allow for final certification through HCD. The first type of housing to be included with the ZODA is transitional housing. This is temporary rental housing for six months or more, and is intended to serve a targeted population such as young adults that have aged out of the foster care system, and individuals exiting from institutional settings. The state requires this type of housing to be allowed by right in all residential zones, and the city cannot impose regulations outside of what would be common for that specific zone. And, uh, traditional house, excuse me, transitional housing is subject to county, state, or federal agency rules, depending on the individual being served and the particular program involved. Next is supportive housing. This type of housing is meant to be for a longer term, and for those linked to a service agency that assists with retaining housing, improving health, and finding work in the community. Such individuals may include persons with low incomes who have one or more conditions or disabilities, including mental illness, HIV or AIDS, substance abuse, or other chronic health issues. The state also requires supportive housing to be allowed by right in all residential zones, and the city cannot impose regulations outside of what would be common for that zone. Supportive housing is also subject to county, state, and federal agency rules, depending on the individual and the program that's involved. Licensed residential care facilities are those that serve six or fewer people, and may include childcare, adult daycare, and elderly assisted living centers. These types of facilities may not be subject to local conditional use permits, and must be allowed by right in all residential zones. As a practice, the city has complied with this state law and has only required business licenses for these types of facilities in the past. The ZODA now will codify this practice. Finally, the type of housing that's perhaps received the most attention in communities is the emergency shelter overlay zone. This is the state requirement on cities to establish an area within a land use zone where a temporary emergency shelter for homeless persons may be allowed. To be clear, this doesn't mean that a shelter must be established. It simply creates an area where a shelter can be located should an organization choose to purchase property or lease a building for this purpose. In Paramount, the proposal is to create an overlay zone at 6301 through 6439 Alondra Boulevard, at the Paramount Business Center, across from Home Depot. And again, this is in the M1 light manufacturing zone. Within this overlay, local regulations are allowed, however, it must be helpful to the development of emergency shelters. And these are several photos showing the proposed location of the emergency shelter overlay zone. On the left is an aerial photo of the Paramount Business Center complex outlined in blue. As you can see, this area is surrounded by the LA River to the west, the City of Compton to the north and east, and as I mentioned, the Paramount Home Depot to the south. On the right, the photos show the type of buildings within the complex. Again, the area is within the M1 light manufacturing zone, and is not adjacent to any other existing In terms of regulations that can be imposed on an emergency shelter within an overlay zone, our licensing for facilities must comply with local, state, and federal codes. The distance between emergency shelters must be at least 300 feet apart. There must be onsite security and, and a security plan for the facility. Exterior lighting is required. There must be a kitchen and dining area. Adequate bathrooms must be provided. Stays at an emergency, at an emergency shelter cannot exceed six months. Facility parking must be provided. There must be a management plan for the facility, and trash services must be provided. There must also be adequate staffing levels and areas for both intake and queuing. Loitering is to be prohibited at all times, and there must be designated areas for storage of personal property. Staff conducted several community meetings and public hearings prior to the adoption of the housing element update in 2014, and the assessment of fair housing process in 2017. Staff also reached out to property owners, business owners, and property managers at the Paramount Business Center earlier this year regarding the proposed overlay zone. Through this engagement and notification process, staff has not received widespread comments in opposition to the overlay zone. However, this afternoon, we did receive a letter from legal counsel representing the Paramount Business Park Association voicing their opposition. This letter was addressed to all of you, and a copy has been placed in front of your seat So in summary, this ZODA brings the city into compliance with state law and federal housing requirements. It'll help the city to begin meeting its housing requirement, especially with addressing homelessness. And by meeting all these requirements, the ZODA will help the city with eligibility for various planning and housing grant opportunities in the future. Of course, if we had our druthers, we'd like to fully analyze how to best tailor and implement these programs in Paramount, and to bring a staff recommendation for you to consider and make your own decision on. Unfortunately, however, the state and federal housing agencies don't give us much choice but to approve these programs on their terms, or risk losing valuable funding sources, as we've already mentioned. So with that, we ask your approval of this item, and myself and some other staff members from the Community Development Department are here to help answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
At this time, would you like me to entertain questions for staff?
Sure.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for Kevin?
Not yet.
Kevin, how come, why was this place picked, to start with? Why was it, what was the reason for going there?
For the emergency shelter?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, it, it amounted to a choice. We, we looked at various areas throughout the city, and, you know, it could have been done, you know, a number of different ways. It could have been chosen for the M1 zone as a whole, it could be chosen for the M2 zone as a whole. We could have picked individual places in the M2 zone, or individual locations in the M1 zone, and that's what we did. You know, there were, you know, are there other options? Sure, there are other options, but again, this amounted to a choice. Looking at the location, it, it seems to have, you know, some, some benefits in terms of location. You know, there's always pluses and minuses with a, a location that's picked, but, you know, this, this seemed to be a good location considering its, its proximity adjacent to the LA River, where, you know, homeless people are. The fact that it's in an area that's not close to housing, existing housing, and the fact that it, it's also gated, so it, it seemed like an appropriate place for something like this.
What were some of your other options?
Well, again, I mean, you know, it, it could have been in, 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 in any other place. You know, it could have been somewhere else in the M1 zone, but this is-
Has to be in the M1 zone?
No, but again, we were just looking for what could be the, you know, the most ideal situation. There's no perfect location, but again, it amounted to a choice.
Also, if, if I may add, Madam Mayor, in answer to Councilmember Hofmeyer's question, the M1 and M2 zone, as, as we've learned, is, there are houses sprinkled throughout the M1 and M2 zone that were done prior to us and our incorporation in 1957, so to consider the whole entire M1 zone or M2 zone, if you will, for homeless shelter would have an impact on residential. So, this again was chosen as the least impact on other uses.
And you stated that the public was notified, and no one came before Planning Commission in opposition?
Well, the, the public was notified through various community meetings and at public hearings. There were public hearings during the housing element process. We did have hearings before the Planning Commission. And we did also do some outreach to the businesses and property owners at this property for the emergency overlay zone. And that was done towards the end of last year and the beginning part of this year. So, we, we feel like, you know, ample notice was given-
Yes.
-prior to the Planning Commission, which was, you know, just last month, so.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I understood two things. One is that it's mandatory that we do this, but is it mandatory that we do it in Paramount, since we're such a small city? Could we move over to Long Beach in conjunction with Long Beach or Bellflower for our facility, or is it something that we have to do in our small city?
Yeah, my understanding, and John King can, can also add to this, but my understanding is that, yes, it is a requirement of all cities, that cities on their own identify this as part of their housing element, and then make that change to their zoning ordinance. So it's something that's required of the state that we, we do.
Right, but is there anything that would keep us from partnering with another city that has a bigger facility, or, you know, in a better area, where they could house somebody for six months out of town?
Yeah. Not to my knowledge, but unless, John, do you have anything to add to that?
That's actually a, a good question. There is a, a provision that we could look at in the future housing element, that we, we will be doing this again in a, in a few years, it goes through cycles. There is a provision for cities to partner, and it's usually similar cities of, of like type. It probably wouldn't work for Paramount and Long Beach, but perhaps a Paramount-Bellflower or, or something of that sort. So there, that is an option later, you know, down the road.
Only because we're such a small city? I think if that was an option, that would be a good option to partner. If we can partner with Southgate for Dog Park, and if we can partner with Bellflower for homelessness, I think we should be able to partner with a bigger city. We're only 4.5 square miles, and it will impact businesses around there. I just think if we can, that would be a good idea.
Okay, yeah, yes, so that, that is something we could look, we could keep in mind for the, the future housing element, which would, I believe it's about two years away.
Thank you. Okay, the, there's a person who wants to speak?
Yes, and Madam Mayor, I apologize, but the green sheet on your motion sheet does not indicate that this is a public hearing, although it is in the agenda tonight that it, that it is a public hearing. So, you'll need to have a public hearing, as we normally do, and then have a motion to close the public hearing, so.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? In favor? In opposition? In opposition? Okay, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Paramount Business Park Association. That's the, the park that's located at 6301-6439 Alondra Boulevard. And I want to thank the council for their, for their focus on this matter. Obviously, we heard from Path tonight, and homelessness, homelessness is a serious issue that everybody's trying to wrestle with, so appreciate, appreciate everybody's consideration on that. Just a quick administrative thing, I know you already got, received a copy of the letter that I provided. I also received later this afternoon four additional letters from the individual owners of the business park that I'd like to introduce or be part of the record. Unfortunately, that's, that's my only copy, but I have one. So, so the business park itself is about 260,000 square feet, comprised about 15 different, different tenants, businesses within there. And the, our opposition today is to the, to the location of the emergency shelter overlay zone. It first, this location first came up when the housing element update was first presented, and in my letter, you'll see when it was, when it was pointed out. So that was 2014. There wasn't any discussion in, in speaking with, with the association members, there was, they weren't involved in any of the outreach, they weren't aware of when that, when that first came up. And it's also unclear to me how that location- And it's also unclear to me how that location was first picked to begin with. I haven't seen any sort of studies in terms of different locations that were considered, the size of the space, the characteristics that they were looking for when they decided it, but it was in the housing element update for the first time. And then in 2016, in the fair assessment, the housing report, there was a general reference to the emergency zone overlay, but it didn't call out the specific area of what had been selected. It wasn't until October of 2017 where the business owners received a letter from the city saying, here's our plan, your business center has been identified as the emergency overlay area. And at that point, that prompted Lory O'Royo, who's a representative of the association, to reach out to the city, and they scheduled a meeting on January 10th, 2018. And a couple of the business owners came with Lori to meet with the city, and it was sort of, it was a short meeting, it was a 30-minute meeting, discussing sort of the general concept behind the ordinance and behind the overlay zone. Let me fast forward here because my time's running out. Our main objection is twofold. One is, the process itself is very arbitrary in terms of how they, how they came to focus on this particular area, and did they consider other areas? And the second thing is, if you really want to solve the problem, this isn't the best area to do it. First off, the area is fully leased. At the time when they did the housing update, there were some vacant buildings, but now it's fully leased. Number two, there are CCNRs as part of the organization that prevent emergency shelters from being established. So you don't, so you may have the overlay zone that's there in theory, but if you really want to have a shelter, this isn't the place because the CCNRs prevent that from happening. So thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? May I have, close the public-
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Okay, what's your pleasure? Any questions?
I think we should continue this on and look around and see if we can find a better spot, or see if we can get together with Bellflower or Long Beach or something like that. Or at least-
Do we have time to do that? Huh? Do we have time to do that?
Well, again, the-
As long as we're working on it, we're all right, right?
Well, the in cooperation with another city, that would be for our next housing element, which is due in two years. So we do need to do something with this current housing element to fulfill that requirement, so.
What is the timeframe? When do we have to submit?
Do we have a timing on when we have to submit this, John?
It's actually overdue.
It's overdue. There you go.
Seeing that we just had this put on our, on the desk before the meeting, I haven't even had a chance, I can't thoroughly go through it. I mean, I did plan, I did listen to what his concerns are, and I would at least like time to listen to what the objections are, and then also some time to find out if we can go with another city.
Okay. And again, that, the other city thing would be for the next housing element, which is due in two years. So we'll, we'll have to cross that bridge in two years, but for this current housing element, this current, what is it, a five-year period that we're in?
It's an eight-year period now.
Eight-year period, thank you, that we're in. We got to do something now with this because it is overdue, so.
Well, why don't you explain to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to overtalk you.
I'm just saying, but you're asking us to vote on something that we're not thoroughly educated on, and it's important to hear both sides of it, and I'm sorry, but the lack of preparation does not constitute an emergency. I haven't had the chance, and I can't vote on something that I'm not comfortable with.
Absolutely, and that's understood. Again, we just got this, this afternoon, a few hours ago, so we were reviewing it too. We can definitely continue this item to another date, but it would, is, let me just make sure I have the clear direction of the council, to continue the item for review of this particular document, or would you like for us to consider a new location?
Both.
Within town?
I think both.
I would say both. Let's table it till July 17th.
Okay.
And if you can-
Okay.
-look at other, maybe areas.
Sure, I will need some more time to do that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, excuse me, John, but just, just so that the council is understanding of the process here, where we are today is a culmination of work that started, that began in 2013. Is that correct, John?
Yes.
With, with work on the housing element to identify, which, and part of that was to identify, you know, an emergency overlay zone. And at that time, and I believe it was, it was approved by the city council in 2014. At that time, you know, that location was approved by the city coun, by the Planning Commission first, and then by the city council. So, you know, when, after that was done, we then, you know, continued to do work and then brought it to the Planning Commission, which, you know, of course, approved this for your review. So again, I mean, if, if we were to continue this item, I just want to understand, you know, what the purpose of that continuation would be for, because this has already, like I said, this is already, the location of the overlay zone has already been approved by the Planning Commission and the city council. So at this point, we would be undoing that through this continuation-
And just starting the process all over again.
To go, to go back and, and find a new location, if that's what you'd like to do. And if you do want to do that, then we'd have to start again with the housing element process again.
May I?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Lemmons?
I recall the whole process, so I know what you're talking about, where at. It does bait one question for me only, though. In approving this, that doesn't mean a homeless shelter is going to go in there tomorrow-
That's correct.
And that you're saying that. This is a plan should an emergency situation come up and we have to put them somewhere.
Correct.
So the second part of my question would then be, in Councilmember Ginn's suggestion about partnering with somebody to put something for a future space, then there's a timeframe to be able to do that in the two-year period, because you're not going to go build a homeless shelter there. You just need to designate an area to meet the mandate for the state.
Correct.
Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
All right.
That is correct.
But we don't have to build it right now?
No, absolutely not. This is, this, this is just to create an overlay where a possible-
Emergency shelter.
-homeless shelter or, I'm sorry, emergency shelter could be built. It's not that we are, it's not that the state is mandating that one will be or is to be built, it's just a location where it could be built.
And just approving of zoning ordinance.
And with all, with all deference to the, to the council that came up and spoke, this action tonight, if the council were to approve this, this would not affect current businesses that are there now today. They can continue to operate. If one moves out, another one could move in and conduct business there. This has no effect on the, the business property there. This, this only allows for the possibility of an overlay, I'm sorry, of an emergency shelter to be built.
Well, it's much clearer now, the way you're pointing it out, now it's much clearer than it was.
Okay.
And that would give us the time to research, you know, like at Councilmember Ginn's suggestion.
Right.
We have plenty of time to research. Should we hit that wall, do we have other options?
Right, right. And, and, you know, with the partnering, it's a good idea, you know, we could start that process now in working with Bellflower or another city to possibly, you know, combine forces, if you will, to do something like that. So, you know, we, and, and we could start that right away. And, you know, I'm sorry, one, one other point to make is that, you know, with the municipal code, with the zoning ordinance, you know, as we like to say, it's, it's a living and breathing document. This isn't something that you make a decision on tonight and then it's set in stone forever. This is something that, that can always be updated over time. So again, we're just looking for you to take this action now so that we can be in compliance with state and federal law, and then, you know, two years down the road, we can revisit this whole process again and make the changes that you want.
Very good. Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, that's pretty well built out over there, is it not?
Correct, yeah.
So if there were no vacant spaces, and all of a sudden there's some sort of an emergency declared, but you aren't going to be able to build anything and the tenants are already there in place.
Right.
What would happen then in a situation such as that?
Well, it, nothing. Right, nothing, yeah.
And you are correct, Councilmember Hanson, that it is, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Hanson, that it is leased out right now and owned up right now.
Right. So there's, it would, something would have to, have to all of a sudden become vacant in other.
Well, it would have to become vacant, that's, that's the first thing, but then also, there would have to be the, you know, the wherewithal of a nonprofit to come forward and either want to purchase the property or lease the building in order to, you know, run an emergency shelter.
Okay.
So, you know, there, it's dependent on a lot of different things.
I would liken it to, if you guys remember how we had to designate an area of the city for adult business operation, doesn't mean one's going to be built there, but the law required that we designate an area.
Right.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I just, I think, I do have one other comment. I think if we could table it for one more meeting, just till, so we can have time to read, because I'm reading, you know, some opposition based on there's a school nearby, and I wasn't here in 2014, and I'd like the opportunity to read this. Also, you know, it's a fair probability now with homelessness growing as it is, that it could possibly, it's a good possibility that that could happen. If everybody else is comfortable with it, I can abstain because I just can't vote right now without reading it. So it's up to the rest of the council if they want to push it forward or take an opportunity to, you know, to the time to come here to object.
And Councilmember Ginn, it's a fair point that, you know, you haven't had an opportunity to read through it and understand what the comments are, and, you know, by the same token, you know, we just received that today at about 1:30, so we haven't even had a chance to fully absorb it. And, and again, I'll, I'll remind you of the fact that, you know, we did reach out to the Paramount Business Park and Business Center in October of last year, met with them in January of this year, you know, and then six months later, had the Planning Commission meeting where we did receive some comments from representatives from the business park. But, you know, from October of last year till today, this is, you know, the first letter we've received.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the item. For approval.
Excuse me?
I move it for approval.
Do I have a second?
Oh, one second.
Five for a second.
Okay, motion approved. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item seven, public hearing assessment of charges for delinquent refuse collection. Staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is something that we do each year. Our municipal code requires us to assist our refuse hauler at collecting delinquent charges for trash collection, and Kevin will tell us how we do this. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John. Good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'll try to be very brief here. Before you tonight is an annual assessment of charges for delinquent refuse collection for residential customers. As you know, per the municipal code, the city is obligated to assess, excuse me, to assist Calmet with this collection process by forwarding the assessments to the Los Angeles County Auditor Controller's Office for inclusion with the property owner's tax bill. During this process, the property owners are given ample time and several written notices to pay their delinquent trash bills. This process is necessary as a matter of public health to help ensure payment for regular and proper collection of community refuse. During the 2017 calendar year, there were 330 due, past due accounts totaling over $88,000. As such, staff recommends that the city council submit the 2017 delinquent refuse collection charge list to the county auditor controller's office, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
Move the item.
This is a public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'm opening the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor, in opposition?
Move it, close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item eight, staff report on the agreement between the Los Angeles Gateway Region Integrated Regional Water Management Joint Powers Authority and the City of Paramount.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we're requesting your approval on agreement for our participation in joint powers authority. This JPA is tasked with installing and monitoring equipment that tracks stormwater pollutants that go into the rivers, namely the LA River and the San Gabriel River. This is a five-year agreement, and we've teamed up with several other cities throughout LA County, and Sarah Ho, our interim public works director, will handle the item. Sarah?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of council, we'll start with a little bit of a background information on this agreement that I have before you this evening. In about 2012, the Harbor Toxic's TMDL, or Total Maximum Daily Load, was introduced into the MS4 stormwater permit. This TMDL established numerical discharge limits for a variety of pollutants. Any public agency that discharges into the LA and San Gabriel Rivers watershed areas are impacted by this TMDL and are required to monitor the watershed area for pollutants, including metals such as copper, lead, and zinc. Paramount, through its membership with Gateway Regional Group, is able to participate in these joint ventures with other membership agencies who are also impacted and regulated under the MS4 permit. These ventures are important for us to keep costs low for the cities that have the same obligations. With Gateway as the administrative entity, they're then able to hire well-qualified and knowledgeable consultants to complete the required monitoring on behalf of all of the agencies. In 2014, Paramount joined with several other cities, agencies, and Gateway to share costs to install a monitoring station and to monitor for the Harbor Toxic's TMDL. That agreement has now expired, and so we are, the agreement before you this evening, we'll pick back up where that left off with monitoring and push those efforts through June of 2023. The city's annual cost for this monitoring agreement is very low, it's only $637.52 for FY19, and it's already been included in the budget. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions before we ask for your approval.
How many cities are we partnering with, Sarah?
This one is a very large, it's about 60 cities and agencies. That's why our cost is as low as it is on this one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments for Sarah?
Move the item.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item nine, approval of updated city special and holiday events scheduled for the remaining 2018 events. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this next item is a fun one. It involves several of our upcoming, upcoming community events, and Dave Johnson, our parks director, will handle the item.
Thank you, John. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. As John mentioned, it's an easy, fun item we have tonight because we get to go over some of our upcoming special events. So back in January, we brought for you the list of all the events for the whole year, but at that time, we were lacking some information. We did not have the date for the Topeka's Day of the Dead event, nor did we have the date for our Veteran Celebration Fair. So we now have those, and we also had to make a change to our summer concerts from the original date that we gave you. So our concerts actually do start this Thursday after the Fourth of July, so please come on out. And those concerts, again, are at Progress Park, and they start at 6:30 and they go to 8 o'clock at night. Topeka, actually informed me today, we originally, when we spoke about two weeks ago, it was Saturday, October 20th. We actually already have a change, so they've actually moved it to Sunday, October 21st. And actually, Topeka is going to try something a little bit different. They typically have been on the park itself. They're actually going to go into the community center and try to scale the event down a little bit. They've also been faced for these last few years, oddly, in October with a very, very hot day, so moving into the community center will hopefully make the event a little more comfortable for everybody who attends. And then our Veteran Celebration Fair, this will be the first year that we do that. That will be on November 3rd, which is a Saturday, and will also be at Paramount Park. Just as a reminder, because the Santa train will conflict with a council meeting on December 4th, when we last discussed this, the council did agree to move their council meeting to December 11th and would go dark for the, or the December study session. That concludes my report, and we are recommending that the city council approve the updated special and holiday event schedule for remaining 2018 events. Be happy to answer any questions.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes. Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Okay, at this time, are there any comments or committee reports from council members?
The only thing I have, uh, Mayor, is, uh, I called this morning and I've talked to Margarita about the, uh, fireworks, and I just asked her how many citations we had. I heard last year we had 30 major citations, and she said we've only had one so far this year. Now, I know I haven't heard as much this year, but I was just wondering what is going on, if they're not enforcing it as much, or you're waiting for tomorrow?
Well, I will turn that over to our lieutenant, uh, Lieutenant Oscar Barragon, to handle that.
Good evening, council. Uh, sir, we, uh, to be frank with you, I'm not sure, I don't have an exact number, because, only because we have, uh, we, we started on Sunday. The city was generous enough to hire, we hired five deputies every evening, in the evening hours, to do this. Um, every evening from July 1st until tomorrow, we were enforcing specifically fireworks. So, um, I don't have the numbers of how many people they've gotten, because that accounts also for patrol, like the 33 that they gave you from last year, that accounts for patrol also. So Anthony Martinez is off on vacation, so normally he keeps the stats on how many come in, and then Dave Bateman, I spoke to him today, and he said he hasn't received the copies that he normally receives, so for, uh, our next meeting, I will have a number for you, if that's okay?
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Gillen?
Um, not on that subject, but on, um, I did receive three calls, Dave, um, for the concerts in the park. People who live in the San Street say they feel left out because they don't have transportation to get to, uh, Progress Park, and they were inquiring if, um, and they'd like to enjoy the music, if there was any way that they could provide a bus for the concert at a certain time that they could, um, be transported to.
We can absolutely do that. Uh, I probably will not be able to get that effective for this first concert, but the remaining concerts, we absolutely can do that.
And then I just wanted to make a comment to Scott, Kevin, and John King and John Carver, uh, for the commission effort that they put forward in getting the regulations, um, finally, you know, a consensus from the commission to pass them forward. I know you guys worked really hard. Uh, I appreciate the fact that you have stood fast and, um, really dug in in a controversial, um, situation with trying to balance the community and the businesses, and I think you guys have, uh, come to a really good consensus, and, you know, um, thank you for your effort and, and standing back doing so.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, just one other thing. Um, I also got a phone call, if we could move meetings to 7:00 PM, that's on, you could do it, maybe ask later on down the line if we would be willing to do one meeting at least a month at a 7:00 PM time. There's community members who'd like to come, but they'll get out of work till 5:30, 6:00, and they can't make it here.
Sure, that'd be at the direction of the council, consensus of the council.
You can put it in Friday memo. Okay, this-
I have a memo.
Okay, I'm sorry, go.
I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
In attending the, uh, Veterans Celebration meeting last week, Dave, did you not say, maybe this is not the appropriate time, you're gonna have a little surprise beforehand at this one? Was that not true? That, maybe that should be mentioned if it is or it isn't?
That's why you're the vice mayor.
Oh, yeah, right.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Uh, yes, that's a very good point, thank you. Uh, at this concert on July 5th, uh, we're gonna do a little musical marketing, uh, so one of the groups that's gonna come out to perform, um, on the Veterans Celebration event, uh, they're called the Satin Dolls, uh, they do 1940's era music, they dress in, uh, that era costumes, uh, they're really entertaining. They're actually gonna come out on July 5th, uh, at Progress Park at 6 o'clock, a half hour before the, the, the main band starts, and they're gonna come out and kinda do a couple teaser songs to kinda give you an idea of what they'll be playing at the Veterans Celebration Event, and then we'll be obviously handing out a flyer, uh, informing people about that event. So, thank you, sir, I forgot about that.
Very nice.
No problem. And also, I think, along with that, on that same event, there's a lot of planning going into this, and, uh, getting all the service clubs on and so forth involved in this, and I know the staff's been working pretty hard on this whole program, and it sounds like it's gonna be quite interesting with the cannon shooting off and, and people in, in, period dress and so on and so forth, so, might put that in the back of your minds to, uh, write that down on a calendar, because I think it's gonna be a pretty, pretty big thing. It's, we've even requested a little flyover, possibly.
Oh, my goodness. You're giving too much away, Tom.
No, I'm not going anywhere, I'm trying to get people there.
And it's a request, that's requested this.
Very nice. Anyone? Okay, at this time, um, this morning, um, I had a resident come to my home, and he delivered this letter to me, and, um, he asked me to read it publicly. He was not able to be in attendance because he had a prior engagement, and it states, "Dear Mayor Martinez, my name is George Tanner. I have lived in Paramount for 95 years. I have seen it grow and prosper. The city government here has been the best of all neighboring cities for many years. Most of the voters will give the current city council an A+ in governing our city, knowing the quality of government needed. We have kept the all-American city alive and well. I am furious over new people wanting to recall our super council members, Diane Martinez and Peggy Lemmons. These new people want to take over and ruin our good city. I was a naval officer in World War II and have been a proud citizen here for 95 years. Let's keep Paramount great and keep out the new inferior government wannabes. Sincerely, George Tanner." Are there any staff comments?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, we, um, wanted to show you tonight a few of the videos that some of our, our, our social media team have put together, so we have four of them, they're very short, and we'll roll them now, Jonathan. The first one is the Heritage Festival wrap-up, you all were there, so you can kinda see a recap of what was there.
Hey, City of Paramount, we are here at Paramount Park for our second annual Heritage Festival. Let's go on inside and check out live music, food. We have a farm back there, guys, I am so excited. We have lots of food and entertainment, so let's go on inside and check it out.
Aw.
Our next video is the Friday Night Lights, it's a new, um, youth flag, uh, football program that we're starting here in Paramount.
Sign up for Friday Night Lights Flag Football for kids in kindergarten through eighth grade. FNL has no blocking, just quarterback, receiver, and running backs, so everyone is in motion. Games begin in September at Paramount Park. It's $100 for the first 100 to sign up. Visit paramountfnl.com to register.
So, as you know, we, uh, we lost the Paramount- We lost the Paramount Youth Football League, so we're hoping this will come in and take that, the place of that. Our next one is a promotional video for Concerts in the Park.
City of Paramount. July 5th to check out Ricardo Lemo and La Máquina Loca.
Come July 12th to see the Tom Nolan Band.
Uh, July 19th for Mariachi Romanza.
July 26th to check out Crown City Bombers.
August 2nd for LA Vation.
August 9th at Progress Park to check out the Smith Band.
And our last video is a promotional video for our Boulevard of Heroes.
The city's Boulevard of Heroes features streetlight banners along Paramount Boulevard saluting current members of the US Armed Forces who are residents of Paramount or who have lived in the town prior to joining, and currently have an immediate family member here. If you know of such an individual, call 562-220-2121 to sign them up.
And that's it, and on behalf of the staff, we'd like to wish you and the community a very happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, John. You as well. Okay, at this time, I would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Long Beach Fire Captain David Rosa, who was tragically shot and killed one week ago responding to an explosion in a high-rise senior apartment building in Long Beach.